Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming here and online. Call meeting door. I plan to leave.
For my list.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for consent motion for item one point zero three. On the recommendation to superintendent to approve March tenth twenty twenty five regular board meeting agenda. Any questions on tonight's agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? So I'd like to ask for consent motion on item one point zero four. On the recommendation of the interim superintendent to approve the minutes of the regular February twenty fourth twenty twenty five Board of Education meeting minutes.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so move. Well, we do not have Gianna tonight, so we have someone I pretty I know pretty well. Carly? The student body report is up to you. See, you're wearing an interesting structure.
Yeah, I am. I'm Carly. If anyone doesn't know me, I'm a senior. I'm giving the report for Gianna tonight. So starting off, we Ms. Harvey has put together a career day, which is March twentieth from eight thirty to eleven. So the first half of the school day. Grades nine through ten are hearing from professionals in all different job areas, just to kind of get an idea of where they maybe what they want to do in the future. And then eleventh and twelfth graders are going to be hearing more of about the skills that like you're going to need after college. So like aside from all the core class stuff, you'll be hearing about financial stuff and career readiness and the civil service civil service exam. So a lot of stuff just necessities for after high school. Next up is the NGHS activities. So firstly, they had put together a Hershey Kiss fundraiser during Valentine's Day week. They had a big success. And then at their next meeting, NGHS is going to vote on which organization they're going to donate their profits to. So it's going to a good cause. They also designed and distributed Valentine's cards for the residents at Morgan Estates. And then last, I believe it was Friday, last Friday, NGHS and NHS put together a blood drive that they do annually, where students, faculty, admin, community members, they all participated, and it was a big success. And then finally, for NHS and JHS is the Penny Wars we're doing this month. So there's sixth and seventh grade is supporting Livingston County Dog Control. Eighth grade is raising funds for chances and changes. Ninth and tenth is also supporting the dog control of Livingston County. Eleventh grade is supporting Geneseo Groveland Food Pantry. And then the seniors were fundraising for the Teresa House. So basically whoever gets the most money in their jar at the end of the month, that's where all the profits are going to go too. So. Next up is middle school athletics. They had a very successful year this year. They placed first in all three meets this year, scoring three hundred eighty four points in total. They are also the Southern Division Champions, which is the third consecutive year that they had gotten that title. And we had a top scorer, David West. He was the top scoring eighth grader in the Southern Boses region. So congratulations to all of them. They did very well. And then finally, middle and high school ski club was a success this year. Ski club had a great season with twenty five skiers. This the conditions were pretty rough this year, very cold, but despite the weather, there was no injuries. So that's overall success and they they learned how to ski and snowboard. Thank you to the chaperones, Ms. Prinzi, Ms. Buchi, and Mr. Loughlin, just teaching and guiding the students during ski club. And a thank you to the transportation who took them there and back. So that was success as well. So we're seeing lots of participation and good things happening in the school. So.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, the steam update. So we have Ashley. Sarah and John.
And Sarah Wilcox.
Okay.
So give me one second. So about a month ago or so, we were talking about the different presentations that we were going to have for the Board of Education. And Christie, you talked about Ashley coming to talk about the K five STEAM program. So I asked, would it be okay if we did a full K twelve STEAM presentation at that meeting? So Sarah Frenzy and Sarah Wilcox are both working on their administrative certification, and they're both excellent in technology. So they've been helping me out in the technology office. We had a technology meetings. I asked if they would come to present on this component as well. Okay? So Ashley, I think you're going to start. Do you want me to advance or do you want me to use the clicker?
Oh, go ahead. It's just a couple of things. So I've talked a lot about the program that we've been building in the elementary school, and tonight I wanted to share with you a couple things we've done that have really either become new in my new room or have like greatly expanded in my new room, because that room is just lovely, especially when it's sunny like today. Oh, my God. So if you've never been down to my room, it's really divided into there's two sections on each end and then a big open area in the middle. And one section we call the play place. But it's full of things that anyone K through five can use. Kindergarteners spend a lot of time there intentionally, but it's all open ended, creative, big play materials, things that they can build, knock down, build again. There's a shared Lego table, a shared puzzle table, and that's been a great thing that we don't always have to put away at the end of the day. So kids will build Legos and then other kids come in and build on top of those. And and it's been really nice to have that area separate. The other side is the maker space, which has every tube, straw, pipe cleaner that the district has are all now in my room. Kids can use those on their own projects, or they can use them with things, those materials, the stuff that I do. One class, Mrs. Zglacki Edie teaches the eight one one class. They made little cardboard houses, and then we lit them up with wires and batteries, and they decorated those. And I had fourth graders that were learning about circuits. So we used this makey makey device and tested different things in the maker space for what was insulators and lower conductors. So those two areas in my previous space were so cramped and tiny, and now they're really open and accessible, and the kids just love the things that they can do in there. So that's been a huge, huge improvement for us, I think. Connect to that. I like when I tend to connect to what students are doing in the classroom. So first graders learn about sound waves in their science class, and then we use that to create instruments that vibrated in some way. So again, all those maker space materials. Fifth graders on the opposite end of the, you know, grade level spectrum, learned about force and motion in their classrooms. So then we did the classic create a device to keep the eggs safe. Eggs were not that expensive when I started that project in December. So we are we are being real cautious with our eggs. But both of those are things that the kids could build for consecutive weeks, and I have the room now to store them to keep working on. And we could go through the engineering design process, go back and fix things and change things that we needed to. So that's been really helpful as well. And then the last little bit, just what's new in the world of coding and robotics. So everybody first grade and up learns how to code and learns some level of robotics. And I know I keep saying I have the room, I have the room, but now I have the room to do a lot more with these. So those are just two of the robots that we use at second and third grade. But the kids can really move around with them. They can create programs on the floor. They can put them on the computer screen, but then watch the robot do them on the floor. The third graders love to, they call it take their robot for a walk. And if you've ever been down by my room, it's like a perfect square. So they take their little robot, like a little dog around the square and can use what they've learned from that to write programs and troubleshoot their codes and everything I think that I wanted to do in my previous space. Now we just have the room to do it. We have the space, the storage. The kids love it. I could take the fifth graders outside to drop the eggs. So it's just been a wonderful, I think, improvement to the program that we've already been building.
Ashley also deserves credit because she's been doing live announcements now with the help of Mrs. New. We were originally just aiming for Friday, but now we're kind of hitting like a Wednesday, Friday strike. By June, I bet we got five days of live announcements. Like, you know, the fourth and fifth graders and what an excellent opportunity to practice their speaking and listening skills. And it's not that scary because you're not in front of a live audience. You're kind of talking to your computer, but I thought that we should mention that if you're doing that as well, because that's something you never could have done in your space before.
I remember going in and watching Ashley's class when she was doing the spiral ball programming, and there's no way it could be contained in that space. So it would always end up out in the halls, which was fun to see.
Really distracting to everyone else.
Very distracting to everyone else. So it really is another reason why we wanted to do the presentation now, because now we've we've been in that space for a full year. It was really March that we opened the new space down there. And this is not a full K twelve STEAM curriculum type of presentation where we wanted to spotlight how we're using the new space and some STEAM initiatives that we have in there.
So I'll mostly be speaking for Dave Tasper, who is teaching a sixth grade class in the STEAM room for all sixth graders. And these are some of the projects he's been doing. I was excited to share about this one, Alan Turing, if you know who that is. He was coding for Britain during the during World War Two, fighting against, you know, the Nazi attacks on London. And so this game looks at some of the basics of coding and a very, you know, kind of like an essential way where the kids can start seeing the logic behind coding. Because another I decided a different format. I have paragraphs. So they learn about basic switches and gates. See that, again, the how did coding start? It actually, you know, kind of started with games that could show the very basics like this, even looms have kind of like a basic format for how computer coding came about. All started in Britain. So little historical connection.
Another piece of that, I love the idea that they are learning to code even at the earliest grades, kindergarten and so on, without computers. You know what I mean? They're they're learning a a basic problem solving type of structure, you know, to their thinking of it. And this is a new class that Dave's teaching this year. So it's nice to have every sixth grader experience that as they're entering middle school.
And it is nice to see also how the coding is building, as Ashley mentioned, at the elementary level. And then this one. Yeah, you just kind of click through. So they're flying drones using a controller, but there is a block coding program. Again, continuing to build on what they learned at the earlier levels. And I think there's another paragraph there. And so they build on the two D coding they learned at the elementary level up to the three D coding at the middle school level.
And then once again, the space is so helpful there. When we first tried to fly drones or flying it in here and not my finest moment, but the first time I tried to fly one, I impaled it in the ceiling right up here. There's not a lot of space, so we actually had to get the ladder out. But that space down there, they can actually go the entire distance of the room and, you know, like Sarah said, taking that program in from a two dimensional space and robotics to a three dimensional space is really where we wanted to get to.
And I'm going to tag Sarah Wilcox to talk about AI. She has more of a background on that one.
And so AI, I think, is a really big buzzword right now going around just the community and general schools. I think a lot of professions. And we know that AI doesn't, or does, sorry, generates new ideas and data based off of what we feed it and program it. So what they've been able to do is they've been able to use code.org to use AI to make book recommendations. So if you put in your own information, it will then spit out based on that information what it should be recommending for you. So they use like the flow chart model to be able to understand how the coding goes for that, so that they can understand what their outputs will look like.
So getting into how the high school has been using that class. I don't remember if they started right out of the out of the gate with this at the very beginning of the year, but pretty much they've been using it as a morning announcement room since since. Was it the very very beginning, Carly, that you guys started? Day one, was it even?
Yeah.
That's impressive.
It came over in the summer.
And honestly, the equipment they're using is rudimentary. It's not it's not like a lot of high quality video production, but to actually get it started and it is truly a team effort to get the whole production started. So that that really kicks off the day, you know, with our, I think it's all seniors or at least mostly seniors, but broadcast around the school every single day. This was a new class that Megan Harvey's teaching this year. We wanted to spotlight some different types of programs in a space like that. So like I said, this is not touching on all the different K twelve STEAM area. We're not talking about the the traditional technology classes. But a class called Emerging Careers is was a twenty week exploratory class by our high school students, where we really wanted to take it to spots where, you know, students could picture their careers down the road. Different components such as optics were learned in that class. We linked up with a professor at MCC, so students could get optics credit for the class. None of them did take it to that level to get the credit for it, but at least opening up their eyes and getting their hands on that curriculum was the starting place for it. You see all the three dimensional printed hall passes that that was a project at the beginning of the year. And they're not even super high level three D printers, but the idea was to engage students in something that was going to be interesting to them. They learned how to do some basic design, but they could, you know, literally put their hands right on it right out of the chute. They took coding with drones. I remember going into that classroom earlier in the year for an observation and literally they had drones taken apart. They had cut sheets on it. They were trying to figure out what was wrong with these, and they were doing problem solving on how to put them back together that could still be used in another in another class. Climate action kits, we got a couple different, and it's very similar to the Lego type of programming where you're building blocks together. And then you could build things like windmills or solar powered devices with electronics in it. So you could actually get data from those those pieces. And the idea was to open those up and then turnkey teach or work with some of our elementary students. Didn't get to that level, but we at least have some of the gear in place where they could actually see where that's going to. Last slide that we have is a couple of exciting grants that we were hoping to get. On the left, Beth Ward was able to secure a grant from Cornell University. It's called Grow With Us, where they are getting these power gardens for aeroponic. Am I saying that right? Systems and all the tools that go with them. So the idea was inside or outside, they could have grow stations with microgreens. And there is K twelve curriculum that goes all the way through it. So three of those portable stations, the the facility downstairs is perfect for it. You know what I mean? So we have wanted to get some type of agricultural component into our technology program, and this is a great way to do it. The other one on the right hand side, Megan Harvey was able to secure a grant from Plug Power, which is a company in Rochester called H two Grand Prix. It was basically set out for school districts that were in need of engaging students, but also economically in need of engaging students in different STEM types of activities. These were hydrogen based, hydrogen powered, cell remote controlled cars that students would be able to build. We had our initial kickoff meeting and we were excited to get going with it because the cars are amazing. Like when I think of like Odyssey of the mind and how fast they go. These hydrogen cell cars are like, not only is the technology amazing, the actual speed of what they can, you know, how they can perform is amazing. The idea was trying to get some kids that are hooked into engines and building cars into an emerging type of technology like this. Unfortunately, and honestly, each one of those units is a seven thousand dollar car, and we were all set to get that. In the current political zeitgeist that we're in, unfortunately, that was a federally funded program. So that one was pulled from us, but we at least have these connections with with folks at Plug Power, and they were excited that our students were going to engage in it. But at least temporarily, because it is a Department of Energy type of grant, that was pulled. So we never actually were able to secure the equipment. Made some connections and they they want to work with us on Lunch and Learns and things like that. And hopefully down the road, we will be getting some of these cars into our technology program. But the idea would be take them in competitions all across the state, and it's really international. So making those connections was a good thing. Unfortunately, it's going to be on pause for right now. But honestly, that was that's a lot, but we just wanted to do a an overview of how we've used that space so far and use some time for questions if you guys have any.
Well, I'll start with a comment, but thank you. So this is really good. It's great to hear. John and I have been talking a lot about, you know, different things that you're doing, and this felt to be good to to have you all come and kind of lay it out. It's really, really positive and happy for yourselves, as well as glad the space works. And I, the next question always comes back to what else can we do? But what else can the board do as we go through the budget season and STEAM STEM slash STEAM is is high on the list? But we don't quite know what that means just from a budgetary standpoint. So please, you know, help us in that regard. What can we do? Because we really feel confident that this is not only important, but we're looking for something that kind of gives Geneseo that STEAM personality. These are all great programs. What does that mean? We need your help to define that.
I think for sure, speaking from the teacher's perspective, is continuous ability to access PD because the technology changes so quickly. For sure. And, you know, Geneseo is a member of the Geneseo Region Tri-County Teacher Center. And we are a district that participates the most of any of the districts that are enrolled currently. So continuing to have access to that for sure as a teacher is something that we want to be able to hold on to, to access the latest PD.
Okay.
And I would say to piggyback off Sarah, I inherited a bunch of my robots and already I have some that are no longer made or don't get updates anymore. And so I'm lucky to go to the GB Boses STEAM cohort, which is a great networking opportunity and 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 sort of like an informal PD, because I can see what everyone else is using and we can try out each other's stuff. And I need to think about sort of like a replacement schedule with my own technology because things die and things aren't carried anymore and to in order to keep up with what is good and new and useful, I think I need as much information as I can.
And to piggyback off of that, this PD is very relevant, I think, to all content areas. I mean, I was amazed as I looked through these, how many different subject areas are connected in with STEAM. And, you know, again, being a social studies teacher and English teachers in the room, AI, very relevant. So as much PD as possible.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else have questions?
I just had one question for K through five. Is it a scheduled time for those kids? Or is it something where the teacher just says, I'm working on this right now in my classroom. Can I come and join with you to do a project?
So it's both of those and a third thing too. So the kids come, the classroom teachers come on a schedule. It's an eight day rotation. So on average, I see a class like two to three times a month for a forty five minute period. At every grade level, I take small groups of like eight to ten kids for three or four sessions to do some targeted computer foundation skills that we're missing, word processing and slide presentation, things like that. And then if teachers have something else that they want to do, we can sometimes find time to collaborate and do that too. So fourth grade had to do a state required investigation. It's called building circuits and testing circuits. And so I pushed into some of their classrooms prior to that, and we looked at different search tree things and tried different tasks and just sort of supplemented what they needed.
And her materials can be a resource for me as a classroom teacher. If I say I want to do this project, but I don't have these supplies, I can go to Ashley and borrow them from her, almost like a resource library. So that if I have my own idea of what I want in my classroom, but maybe don't need Ashley's help, I can use Ashley's materials.
Sounds really good. Thank you so much.
Well, honestly, the intent is to get it into the classroom too, like not to look at STEAM as a standalone place to go to a room. It's not just going to be in a technology room in the high school. There's a lot of like even like the digital competitions that people are doing in our classroom with the students with the technology. That's the natural type of progression they want. And then having the space just gives us a lot more options. So we're liking what the first year looked like, and we're excited about where it can go from here.
It could help to influence a baseline too. So I can say pretty confidently that all kindergarteners get X or all third graders get Y. And I think that's nice for classroom teachers to know what the kids are capable of.
A baseline, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Christie, yours. Lauren, yours.
So before I begin, an update on UPK kindergarten and summer program, I just wanted to provide an update for elementary, just verbally. I know I'm not going to be as exciting as our student council representatives that are here every other month, but I'll try. Last week, we had Read Across Geneseo Week, and we had our very first family night that kicked off on that Monday night. So it was again, another way to open up the doors to the community to bring them in. We had professors from SUNY Geneseo from the astronomy department, because the theme was, again, it was astronomy and space. We had our very own astronaut named Mrs. Wilcox, who ran the star lab, which is fantastic. And the reading department just did a phenomenal job at organizing events, not just on that night, but throughout the week. We then wrapped up the week with having a number one bestselling author come and visit all students K twelve. And that was in thanks to Mrs. Curly's connections and helping to make this happen. If you have ever had the opportunity to learn about Noodle, Noodle became very famous during COVID. Noodle had either no bones, which means he just walked into his bed and didn't feel like getting up for the day. Or he had bones and he stood up strong and he was like, I'm gonna go for a walk. So in those COVID days, he really developed quite a following. So his first book was Bones Are No Bones. And then this was his follow up that just came out. My goodness. We had kids, I mean, from kindergarten crying because he wanted to go home with him to be as like it was the sweetest thing. We had starstruck fifth graders. We had Lunch and Learns at middle school and high school, and they learned that he is verified on TikTok and Instagram. So that really spoke to them with his four and a half million followers. Just fantastic. And we were so lucky that he actually volunteered and donated his time to come and visit. So I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Curly for helping to make that happen. Thank you to the teams who helped support and create just a memorable event for Read Across America and writing. All the kids wanted to do was write when they left. I went, we all went, yeah, we all wanted to go home and just become an author. So it was very inspiring. So I just wanted to share that. And then as we move into this week, I heard the update from middle school, high school from Carly, and she spoke about Career Day. Elementary has a career day, a job fair on Friday. So we're looking forward to welcoming again many members into the community. Noel Hensler and the second grade team does a fantastic job in creating these experiences for students. That just gets you know, just a snippet of what's happening throughout the halls of the elementary school. Just providing again, very brief updates on UPK. So both Dr. Hunter, Mr. Van Eppes and myself, we have been working on creating a very clear guideline for and timeline to support UPK families who are interested in joining. First, that was the first step. They had to submit their interest, very quick, easy form. We even outreach. We would provide an outreach and call families on the census and said, are you interested? If so, we removed that barrier of saying you have to send in all this paperwork. So Mrs. Ford did that. We added to the list. And they are now a part of our live, our lottery, our UPK lottery. A live UPK lottery invitation was sent out because we have more families interested than the number of slots that we have available, which is twenty four. So Mr. Van Eppes and Dr. Hunter collaborated on that. And our live lottery will take place on Monday, March seventeenth at three thirty in the STEAM lab. We're going to go popsicle sticks, you know, and generator of numbers and but it's all going to be very transparent. So everybody knows whether they got into the lottery or not before they leave. And we will mark everything again on the order. You'll know what your line order is after leaving. If you didn't make it in the library or the lottery, excuse me, then you'll know what opportunities you have. So if you happen to fall twenty eighth, you'd be looking at four people to drop out. And then you can bump up in that line. One question we had, is it too late to express interest? No, just reach out to us. We'll add you, but you just end up going to the end of the lottery line, because our interest forms have already been accepted. So only those families who express an interest will actually be in the lottery. But we can add you to that list that's been created after the lottery. You just never know what's going to happen. Every all the packets are due by May fifteenth, two thousand twenty five. Again, that within that letter to hold your spot. If we don't receive it back, we reach out to the next person in line. And then we have a due date for that. And then we will turn the packets over to pride and joy. And then we have a due date for that. Um, and then we will turn the packets over to Pride and Joy, um, in May, maybe June, and we will have an open house scheduled for new families at Pride and Joy.
At this point in time, how many more students have expressed interest that twenty?
We are currently at thirty-five.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. So, yeah. Which is good. Kindergarten registration, um, packets went out last week. Um, we currently have fifty-one families in our census. Uh, lower, much lower number than last year. Um, but all of those packets were mailed out. Packages are due back the beginning of April, and then we have our screenings set for May seventh and eighth. Question I get her.
What was that number? Fifty-one?
Fifty-one. Now that I'm sure we'll have additional students registered, we may not have reached everybody, but we really tried to work with all the local, um, preschools, um, to gather names along the census, um, but certainly that, that number may fluctuate. All right. And then, oh, so yes, we're planning next year. Also think about summer. So we're excited. Uh, this is, I'm just speaking to the general education summer program. Uh, the, the, um, special education offers an extended school year program that's six weeks. I'm just speaking to a four-week boost um, to help prevent regression for students, um, general education students or and/or students with IEPs who would not qualify for extended school year, very similar to what we've done in the past. Um, so currently, um, we are working, all the teachers are working together and using data, um, to reflect on and drive the recommendations for students participation. We have our March conferences coming up, our spring conferences, and the first initial invitation and the recommendation to take part in the program will take place at the spring conferences. We will then receive a verbal. Yes, I would like my student to attend. Um, or no, we're traveling, all different reasons that they might not attend. Um, but again, the goal is to help support consistent attendance, social, emotional, um, math and literacy, uh, needs. And, uh, Mrs. Curly, again, she did her administrative, um, internship last year. Um, so I can speak to that, just knowing that every day there's, every week there's something exciting planned for the kids. The goal is we want them to come and they, it doesn't feel like school per se, but it's just a summer program, summer camp with a lot of learning, um, that's purposeful. So again, I kind of went through this already. Um, but the, we will provide, the main office will provide registration informations in April. Then we send out program letters that kind of, that provide um, food information. We will provide breakfast again, um, a bagged lunch that would go home with the students, transportation, classroom information, and then the program would actually run the month of July. Um, there is a, um, Monday through Thursday and half days. Little of sixteen days. Just a quick overview. Um, I think spoke to a few of the pieces already. And, um, again, we're going to continue to use our, uh, comfortable and familiar resources to instruct the small groups. Um, so again, character strong lessons, um, intervention type lessons, it's a part, uh, social, emotional learning. We have really great reading, collaborative classroom, I ready instruction. But we will, the teachers are fantastic about maintaining, um, really close eye, uh, and in monitoring the progress of the students throughout the summer and then providing a progress report at the end of, um, the experience. So in order to, um, service hopefully, um, upwards of eighty qualifying students. Um, we, our program budget is, uh, about thirty-three thousand dollars plus transportation. Um, it is eligible for grant funding through our poster. Um, our staff will be required to participate in three hours of professional development um, in order to qualify for this poster as well as curriculum council, which Casey attends already. And, um, and then our students will receive breakfast and a bag lunch at no cost to the families, which is an important key component of the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions to help?
If you don't.
Okay. Well, all right. There was a question. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristy, very much.
Um, you are both Mike and John.
Yes, I'm, I'm actor Hunter and today. So, uh, I do want to start off, I attended last Sunday and Monday many meeting sessions on New York State budget as well as other priorities out of the governor's office. So tonight I just want to highlight some things that maybe can provide you a little bit more information on some topics that you'll be hearing a lot about or probably have already heard a lot about. The first, uh, slide relates to the current numbers that came out in January. There's still only projections. Uh, April first, we will know it's anticipated, but recently the governor's, uh, budget has been online and, and we, we should hear something by April first and on time. So that would be good. That's where we'll get our final numbers. The governor's proposal currently has a four point eight percent increase in the total budget. The foundation aid recommendations for a five point nine percent increase. That's not just Geneseo, that statewide numbers. It was expressed and shared at the meetings that the current New York State fiscal position is very strong. But the outlook is uncertain moving years ahead. Uh, federal funding outcome could have an impact on the New York State budget. There was a hundred and sixty million dollars allocated to fund universal school meals. Sixty-four point six million recommended for college and high school programs, which twelve point two million will be allocated for new dual enrollment opportunities. As you know, that's very strong. At Geneseo Central, our students often come out of Geneseo Central with, with many college credits, which accelerates their graduation in college and saves families a lot of money as well. One of the highlights of the governor's proposal is that there shouldn't be any district that will receive less than two percent. So bottom line is most districts will be a little bit higher, but nobody will be under two percent. So there's two parts, there's four parts of the overall formula, but there's two parts that I want to highlight. And the first one is that many of you are aware that the formula was updated. And one of the biggest areas was the updated regional cost index. And that's the biggest change in the formula. That formula has not been changed since two thousand census poverty data. So that's a big adjustment in that area, which was obviously updated twenty-five years ago. From here on out, it's going to be updated on an annual basis. How does that impact GCS? The revisions to formula produced a positive adjustment for our district. Twenty-five years ago compared to now, now the wealth index and all that is, is certainly much different within the community. This could possibly be a one-year significant jump, but eventually it will level out as the years go on. This is something that we'll, we'll have to closely monitor on a year-to-year basis. The other big part of the formula that I pulled out because it did impact us as well in a significant way, uh, relates to what they call total aid foundation pupil units. And that really relates to your special education population. And that offers districts a weighted pupil count. So what does that mean? So for enrollment, a student in a traditional class would just count as one person. If there's special programming of a student, whether it's out of district or in a different placement, that becomes weighted. So a student could count as a one point six, one point four, depending on the amount of services they get outside the district. This has been a real positive outcome for GCS because we've had a significant increase in the number of students receiving special education services within our district.
By positive, what do you mean financially?
Correct. Yes, it's positive financial. That has impacted our numbers, which could increase our aid. Other New York State aid projections, um, to be aware of. The recommendation is a hundred and thirty-one New York State school districts benefited from the updated poverty formula. Twenty-four districts received less funding. Districts in the New York City area seem to be negatively impacted the most. That is getting much attention, uh, attention from the Senate and Assembly. More to come on that. Zero miss, mission busing, uh, said through many sessions on this, this was a real hot topic across the state. There were the recommendation from a lot of districts, leaders, communities is that New York State look at funding to install charging capacity, infrastructure and bussings themselves, purchasing them. Support funding for additional studies to determine if zero emission busing is feasible, given geography, weather conditions and charge duration. Verify range limitations before schools are obligated to meet the state mandate and determine if hybrids are an option. What are some of the concerns? Uh, companies have increased pricing of their zero emission buses, obviously, anticipating a big demand, so the pricing's up. Electric costs are currently higher than fuel costs, another big concern that districts have. And it really has lacked a comprehensive study performed to this date. And that, that is really problematic. Um, if school districts are forced to get into an area where the study hasn't been thoroughly completed, there could potentially, that could potentially impact all districts in a negative way as well. So basically right now, uh, speaking to many colleagues across the state, districts are kind of on a holding pad, pattern until we learn more and hear more of what's coming next with the zero emission busing.
Zero emissions in itself is separate.
Correct. It's not.
So I learned a lot about that. Yes. So maybe less, but it's not zero.
So at, at, at least at the present time, we're still on the same schedule until they make a change in terms of delaying it to.
Correct. Right now, we're just in a holding pattern. I think you're going to hear a lot more in the near future or going even into next year. This, there's really a lot of pushback on this.
So there was no specific date.
Not right now.
Changed. Okay.
There's, there's also federal pushback.
Yeah, yes.
To the governor specifically from colleagues in the Senate. Or, or advising her to
Okay.
remove the mandate.
Yeah. And the governor's backed off a little bit, hasn't said what she's backed off of, but this was a really big initiative, you remember a year ago.
And the fact that she didn't even talk about it in her budget.
Correct. Is it, is it, is a big sign. Yeah. Next big thing. And Mr. Dimples here, he'll be passing out something for you, but the ban on cell phones, that is coming. And, uh, April, after April first, we'll learn more, but districts must have a board of education policy in place by July first of two thousand twenty-five. Districts are required to post your policy on the webpage. Part of the policy has to include one or more storage methods that we have to identify. Policy needs to consist of the bell-to-bell restriction. There will also be a mandate that districts have to provide a yearly annual report to identify any demographic disparities within the policy. So those are basically so many elements. And again, we're going to learn more. What are some of the concerns I heard about during my sessions? We'll have to determine what exemptions are allowed for instructional purpose. Purposes IEP, five oh four plans, or any medical emergency consideration. So those are all things that have to be discussed. The cost of purchasing a storage method. There are a variety of the different methods out there. Some use like lockers, some use pouches that each student gets. All that will come with a cost. Staffing considerations to collect phones before and after school. Again, potentially another cost if you have to have people there to do that. Repeat offenders could be a big challenge as well because now that falls into your discipline code of conduct. And how are we going to manage headphones, smart glasses and watches? It's much more than just cell phones. I don't think anyone is against in our school reduce an amount of distractions in the classroom. And cell phones certainly create a major distraction in the classroom. How do we get to this? We're basically told what we need to do, and then we will develop our own policy to make sure we meet the mandate to the best of our ability. Any questions as it relates to the ban?
Discuss if, if NISP or anybody else is going to come up with a template policy?
You'll see a variety of them out there. I think through the BOCs of each region will probably come up with a template. But I also have to share that a lot of schools want to create their own. I thought that was something I heard loud and clear.
The template would be just the baseline.
Yeah. Then how do we draft or design our own policy? To best meet the needs of our students and our school. We'll also adhere into the law.
So our districts require to have more than one storage method?
You see the wording and that, yeah, she came up and, and I'm going to give you the answer I got. Well, it depends what the first one is. So I think if you go to the extreme of pouches, lock cabinets, whatever it may be, that should be sufficient. But there's also a possibility if you're saying, okay, and then every student has a locker. Yep. And then the courtiers, you, you have to check to make sure that every student's putting their device in their locker and that could really be problematic. And we all know that schools that have purchased some of the pouches that listened to presentation by one of the companies, uh, that designed them. And they said, of course, there's going to be some students that put dummy phones in there. But that's where you really have to stick to your code of conduct. And make sure the consistency is there with any policy, any rule, the consistency is going to be the most important aspect of proper enforcement.
That's good.
Yeah.
Like moving forward. There's not going to be a choice.
There's going to be a choice. You're right.
And what is the, like, the leadership team between mental health and your administration? Rolling out a plan that's as comprehensive as it can be between, we'll do the policy pieces, but then what?
I think the education component of it is going to be very important. And when I say that, it's not just a district, it's not the board, it's not teachers. Uh, we really have to get parents involved and then some of our community agencies, right? One of the biggest concerns you'll hear back from parents is in case of an emergency, I need to get in touch with my student. So we'll have to reach out to the local police, the sheriffs, the state troopers, and we should have them presenting information how that's exactly what they don't want to happen in a case of emergency, right? Is everybody on the phone? Uh, you can talk of the get, get your government and community leaders in to give presentation. It really has to be everybody having a good understanding of why this is, this is a proposal that, that benefits students and learning.
Well, it's also tied to funding.
It's tied to funding. And the data is alarming. So I think once parents and students really start to hear the data, the specific components of the data, how it's impacted mental health across the nation, those are powerful statistics that I think everybody needs to hear. So when we're planning, I think we really have to look big picture and not be on an island alone because that's certainly won't, won't be as successful to bringing everybody in to sharing this. And I know that's big in the community and you'll hear a little bit about that from Mr. Dimpf. That is not why I brought this up today. They had contacted me before, but, but it is something we really have to plan properly for.
I think as Mike said before with, uh, the scene, tell us how we can help.
Yep. That'd be great. Any other questions? All right. There are some other issues on the table, um, some of the recommendations that districts would like to see is that increase the capital outlay limit from the current one hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A lot of districts feel that that one hundred thousand dollars. A lot of districts feel that that one hundred thousand dollars really in today's. Society where costs are pretty extreme, doesn't cover what a lot of districts need. Uh allow districts to bond finance payment of claims arising from child victims act. Uh over thirty years, currently it stands at fifteen, so we can bond that if if you do. Have a claim and you have to pay that claim eight over thirty years instead of fifteen years. Increase funding for career and technical education opportunities. Again, another big push. Uh where schools are starting to see more and more students. Really interested in those programs. Uh continue waiver from the thirty five thousand limit on earnings for retirees. This is, this is another topic that. We heard about played often in our sessions was there is a tremendous shortage of teachers. We see it here at Geneseo, but there are districts. Across a board that are in much worse situations where they cannot find certified teachers. As many of you may be aware of, right now you can hire a teacher back. At a full salary and they can also collect a retirement. Initially, the governor said there's no way she's approving that waiver one more time. Last weekend, I heard some positive results from that, that it looks like it may be something because schools are really getting nervous. How they're gonna staff their buildings. And and you want the most qualified people doing that and if you do not have. The highest qualified people, uh that impacts student learning. So that's something we'll really have to keep a close eye. Uh there's talk about full reimbursement to districts for special education students placed outside of district. Obviously. Districts burden those costs right now. How can you state how offset some of those costs? Um and then restore any monies that a district may or should have received in years prior. But there were adjustments made to their state aid. If they pay you too much, they come get it right away. But if they owe you, you don't get it. So hopefully that is something that gets accelerated as well. Last topic has nothing to do with last weekend or the meetings, but uh the end of the year schedule. Met with GFA, as many of you know, that we had to. Emergency school closing days this year that left us with two additional days available to use elsewhere. Of course, I want to highlight that we have two, but if we have to close again due to emergency conditions. Whether it's power, weather, anything, water main break, then we don't have two left. So what do we do with those two days? If you recall on the one page calendar, it said, well, May twenty third. That's the Friday before Memorial Day. We don't use any snow days and students and staff will have off on that day. We've obviously used two, so that thought is not out there anymore. So what we decide to do instead of using one or two we have left on that day, because you're really taking a risk. If something were to go wrong. And you have a power outage for two days or or more, you've given back a day and you can't count that as a day of obstruction. There is emergency regulations from the governor, but that's not when you can't do that if you've given a day back. So we will. Give June twenty sixth and twenty seventh as it stands right now, where only staff will report. That communication will be going up to families. But I want to present it to the board just so they're aware of. If you hear, why are we not doing that Friday before May? Uh we did have to use a couple of snow days and to take that chance, especially with an older building. And those that have been around a long time know we've had a close in the past, whether it's a water main break or electric outage. That's where we're at. And to echo what everybody else is, we appreciate your consent and support and all you do for our school, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um just in with Dr. Hunter out here, I'm gonna give a quick update on a couple of the topics. The first is uh related to, if you notice, we haven't had a clerk slash secretary for the last couple of meetings. We had, uh we've been conducted a search for the uh. Superintendent Secretary slash District Clerk. They had fourteen candidates apply. That was narrowed down by an internal team to five. There were five interviews, I believe, now. Four have been done, one more due um and then uh. Will be that team, I guess we'll also be narrowing it down to the top two. I expect by Wednesday of this week, we may at least have an interview with one of the top two. And possibly two on that day, but the second one thereabouts a few days later, so. By. This week, we may know who the candidate is on the twenty fourth. Our our board meeting on the twenty fourth, we should uh should be on the agenda to approve the candidate. Hopefully we'll have a chance to have board members meet, whomever that is. Uh between now and then. That's on the clerk secretary. Additionally, uh we are proceeding and the Board of Education met tonight. In executive session to, for the first time, to look at the candidates for superintendent. We had twenty one initially applied. Uh three took theirselves themselves out of the list. We have narrowed. Think we've narrowed it down to eight, maybe nine. And uh over the next couple of weeks uh through this month. Our consultant will be working on the scheduling. Looks right right now by. April twenty. Twenty second, twenty third and twenty fourth, there will be uh. The number of interviews taking place during those three days. And then we will have two. Constituent, I want to say constituent committees. That will be made up of faculty, students, community members. Uh that will conduct interviews of the top three candidates. At the end of April, the twenty eighth, twenty ninth and thirtieth of April. And by the end of April, we may have a candidate selected. So that's a very quick updating update on both the district clerk secretary and the superintendent searches. Any questions on any of that at this point?
We did have one signing for community relations. Mr. Dimple, you're up.
Dan brought goodies.
It is, I brought goodies.
I want to say uh I'm I'm Dan Del. I, we, my wife and I, Sue, realize that we've lived on Highland Road for fifty years now. Together, we've taught at Geneseo Central for about forty five. You know, when o- overlapping that we we always were so grateful. To have landed number one in Geneseo and number two for our our time here at school, which is just been a gift, you know, so. And I read, I read your agenda before the meeting and I said, ooh, this is. This is a serious group here and uh uh I I I appreciate that. I thank you for your time and efforts. For this school because I'm going to ask you to do a little bit more and I realize what the what the ask is. Anyway. Um I have some books. And let me just distribute them quickly.
So I already held this book, so if you can.
So earlier this year, uh my friend Rob Christie, fellow swimmer. Uh said, uh he liked this book. He recommended this anxious generation. How the great rewiring of childhood is causing an epidemic of mental illness. It's a book written by Jonathan Haidt. Rob and I are giving you this book uh to help provide background so as to support the development. And an effective school cell phone policy. So it's pretty, it's pretty well timed, actually. Um I like the book. The writing's clear, it's easy to read. Um the book is less than three hundred pages, but it has sixty five pages of notes and references. And so I think it's it's really pretty well researched. Um at the end of each chapter are some bullet pointed summaries. It's, you know, if you've forgotten what the first part of the chapter was, you can pick it up at the end. It's wonderful. So um the problems observed in young people started in two thousand and ten. The smartphone came in in two thousand and eight. The problems uh that that started were an increases in social deprivation. Sleep deprivation, attention fragmentation and addiction. The central theme here is we've been overprotecting our children in the physical world. While underprotecting them in the virtual world. So how did it happen? When did it happen? How have boys and girls been affected differently? What vulnerabilities exist at different ages? How brain development works? And finally, at the end, it says, what are some suggestions and ideas? How to reduce and to work to eliminate these negative outcomes? So it it, you know, it goes through the full gamut. It's very helpful, I thought. It seems to me, it seems like a legitimate problem. This is a health issue, clear and plain and 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 simple. It also seems like a problem with an understandable and doable solution or sets of solutions. Um I was listening to David Brooks give a lecture uh uh earlier last week. And he said, basically, when we're confronted with serious issues, serious problems and stuff like that, whether it's personal or. Or cultural or whatever, that we can, if something's broken, it can remain broken. We can remain broken with it or we can be broken open. And I like that idea of being broken open as being a a bit of optimism. So I think of this as an opportunity for the entire school community to learn something about how to protect and nurture healthy childhoods. The goal is clear, work to enhance a play based childhood, not a phone based childhood. To enhance a childhood that will result in the transition to a healthy adulthood. Parents, students, teachers, staff members, board members, community members. Need to create opportunities. Let us be broken open and understand the learnings that come from a play based childhood. And the dangers inherent in a phone based childhood. So there are some easy fixes, not all, but. We hope this book will provide a reason to put some time and energy into providing opportunities. Uh for young people to have become more resilient, stronger adults. Um so that's, that's what I wanted to say. Um I'm really happy to hear. I'm a little nervous about. Uh July first, having this done, quite frankly, I was thinking, wow, you could have meetings with people, you could bring people up to speed with it and stuff like that. Are there questions that you have for for me on this? If you could give it back to Mike when you're done.
Okay.
And then we're the idea that Rob and I thought, well, then they could, you could begin to start to distribute them to faculty members. Faculty members, I think, need to um need to have a good understanding of of this, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks for being patient with us tonight, dude.
No, it's fine, it's fine. It's a big night for me.
Craig, you haven't met.
I believe we knew before next to me.
Okay, next, your next meeting is twenty fourth. Kevin, any update on policy? Okay, so we're gonna have a workout for a certain reason. Yeah, so you're gonna work on our policy by July third, yeah. Might name in G C C F?
We met last week. We're looking at enhancing some of our procedures for staff to follow when. Applying for grants and different funds. The committee was also very generous, realizing that today's day and age costs are more extravagant for it, so for school. Initiatives, whether it's going to see a show or going to see the uh the science experience somewhere. That they're gonna raise it from five hundred to six hundred dollar max, which is a good thing. So.
Good, thank you. Alright, with that, nobody else was. Kevin, I'll turn over to you and for policies, I mean, sir, excuse personnel. From the personnel session, I asked for consent motion for items eight point zero two to eight point zero seven. Any questions on any of the personnel matters, substitutes? Maybe softball coach, bus drivers, leaving absence. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Under new business, I have for. For some of those, a motion for consent for the regular board meeting agenda and found a recommendation superintendent for the C S E minutes. For the students. Okay, so approval of nine point oh one, C S E minutes. Any questions? All in favor? Our business ops like to ask for motion consent for items. Ten point zero two. And one point zero, ten point zero one, one to ten point zero two. Hey, that's the appropriations and revenue stats reported before. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So.
I would just like to truly thank Stephanie for putting those together for us. Very informative and um. For as a new board member, I really appreciated the information to try to understand the background.
As I said, she's she's better at spreadsheets. I agree, thank you. Is there anything else that for the board? Is anybody else have anything they would like to bring up before we close the meeting? Apparently it's looking me out. So, okay, with that, let's ask for motion for German uh eight oh seven.